Call the November 7th City Council Meeting to Order. Start with invocation. Pastor Andrew.
If you would please, let's bow our heads and close our eyes as we open in prayer. Father, thank you for today. God, thank you for your goodness. As we come here today, we ask you for wisdom. As we discuss, as we make plans, God, we know that you are the source of all wisdom, of all knowledge, and so we just come to you today asking for your help. God, we just also remember, as so many different things are going on in our communities, and for so many different people who might be worrying for their safety, especially with all that's just happened over a weekend. God, we just pray for our brothers and sisters, our fellow Americans down in Texas. God, we pray for them and for their families. God, that you be with them and you bring them comfort. God, we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see some people have signed up for item 9F. That's going to be tabled to the November 21st meeting, so we'll not hear 9F tonight. Next item on the agenda is item 5, consent agenda. It's been requested that we table item C, and also I've got a conflict with item O. So if we can table those two, and any other items to be tabled?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item C and O. Second?
I have one item, sir.
You have an item to want tabled?
Yes, I apologize, gentlemen. Let me see. I just wanted to mention a comment under C if I can.
Okay, so we'll take that after this motion will go. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, and you had a comment on item C?
Yes, sir. Members of council, item number C is a request for a budget amendment from our tourism board requesting the use of $65,000 for additional grants. If the council will recall, when we did the tourism assessment, it was recommended that we reduce the number of, the amount of funds allocated for grants and focus more on marketing and promotions of our hoteliers. And my recommendation to council is that we table this, and I have Mr. Stevens and Mrs. Hill go back to the CVB and have them identify how they plan to spend the funds to see if those grants were going to be related to use of our hotels, events, and/or something to do with economic development, and then come back and give the council a better idea of how those funds will be spent.
Make a motion to table item C until the next meeting, or until it comes back.
Yes.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
All right. Consideration of item O on the consent agenda. Is there any motions?
Make a motion we approve item O on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in second. Roll call, vote, please.
Wimpy? Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Next item is public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. A presentation of financial results for three months ending in September 30th, 2017, for the general fund, police sales tax, fire sales tax, sales tax cap improvement fund, and Broken Arrow Municipal Authority. Tom Cook.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Tom Cook, Finance Department. I might need those. It is beneficial for the city council to review the financial status of the city on a regular basis. This presentation is for the first three months of the fiscal year, ending September 30th, 2017. And as the mayor said, it does include our primary operating funds, which are the general fund, the police sales tax fund, and the fire sales tax fund includes STCI as our primary governmental capital program, and BAMA. And since council have this in their packets, I'm just going to go over the overview sheets, but I will be happy to answer any questions you might have as we go along the way. Start with the general fund. Current revenues in the general fund for the three months ending September 30th, they do exceed the budgetary amount by almost $500,000, and our current expenditures are below our budgetary amount by $250,000. So going down the page, you'll see it results in a net revenue over expenditures of about $1.1 million. As council is aware, our sales tax has been down slightly, and you can see that reflected under the sales tax column under the revenues. It's down $91,000, but positively, our other taxes are up by $440,000. Under expenditures, personal services, salaries are below budget of $81,000, and benefits are below budget also of $126,000. Our other operating expenditures are $41,000 below budget. Looking at the bottom, emergency reserve fund balance is at, the six-month average is 6.6 million, which is 114% of our required amount, and our actual fund balance at September 30th is 8.2 million. The following pages were the income statement and the revenue summary for the general fund. Did council have any questions on those?
Any question, council?
Next is the overview of the police sales tax fund. Current revenues slightly exceed the budgeted amount, and current expenditures are below budget of $300,000, resulting in revenues over expenditures of about $865,000. Revenues, you can see under sales tax, much like reflected in the general fund, the sales tax is slightly below the projection, and the transfers, of course, are equal. And I did want to remind council that the primary sources of funding for the police sales tax fund is the .15% of sales tax that the voters approved with the vision renewal, and then a transfer from the general fund of about 37% of the general fund revenues. Under expenditures, personal services for salaries are below budget of $41,100, and benefits $110,000. This does not include the agreement with the FOP that was retroactive back to the first of the year, but that will be reflected in the three months ending, or the six months ending December 31st. Operating expenditures are below budget of $164,000. And then there was the income statement for the police sales tax fund, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions of council?
Next is the fire sales tax fund. Revenues are below expectations there. Briefly, I'll explain that. The revenues include intergovernmental revenue related to the SAFER grant, the staffing grant that we have for what is now 21 fire personnel, and we do those reimbursements semi-annually. So in the six months ending December 31st, you will see a catch-up of that amount. Expenditures are below budget of about $120,000. The results for the first three months is that revenues are over expenditures by $587,000. Under revenues, I would, the sales tax, the .15% is also received by the fire sales tax fund, and then the transfer of general fund revenues is equal to about 32%. Their salaries and benefits are also under budget by $58,000 for salaries and $16,000 for benefits, and as of yet, we do not have an agreement with the IAFF. Their operating expenditures are about $40,000 below budget. An income statement also accompanies that, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of council?
Next is just a brief presentation of STCI, which is our primary governmental capital program. The budget, annual budget is 7.2 million of sales tax, and we've received 2.5 million. We have budgeted 6.9 million in capital projects, and we've expended 1 million. Debt services budgeted at 1.85 million, and we have not expended any funds there yet, but that, those payments are in November and May. Any questions regarding STCI?
Any question of council?
Last is the municipal authority. Revenues in the municipal authority are under budget by about $340,000, and expenditures are over budget by about $225,000 for current expenditures and revenues. Capital outlay and debt service are below budget. That is really a timing issue. Our debt payments come later in the year, and then capital is just, we haven't built all those programs up to where they will be. Then there's detail on our primary operating revenues, and you can see that they are all below budget, ranging from 96.8% of expected up to 99% of expected. Personnel services in BAMA are below budget by about 229,000. Our other operating expenditures are over budget by about 450,000, and mostly those, that amount is made up of purchased water from the city of Tulsa, and then we had a large operating contract at the water plant for sludge removal that hit all in the first quarter of the year, so that's the primary reason for those two. That operating expenditures are over budget at this point. I did want to point out that we did budget an increase in the fund balance for BAMA of about 277,000 for the year, and so we have an expected ending fund balance of about 1.4 million. But our reserve fund balance, our emergency reserve fund balance should be $6 million, and so BAMA is an area that we have expected rate increases, and we work continually to stay on top of our expenditures so that we can try to improve our financial position. And then there are an income statement behind that, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Tom?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is the citizens opportunity to address the council, and we have a couple people signed up. First, Karen Lee Mayo?
Yes. Thank you, council. I just wanted to reintroduce you all to the Broken Arrow Community Playhouse. We are currently in our 38th year, working towards 40 years in our season 2019, 2020. We have started a major fundraising campaign to do some renovations at the playhouse, which would be primarily our expenditures, not those of the city. We are in a city building at 1800 South Main Street, adjacent to the senior center. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We are trying to build and bring more people and money into the city of Broken Arrow through our presentations, and thank you for letting me address you. Appreciate it.
Karen. Next, we have Harold Price.
I appreciate the opportunity to be able to address you folks. I'll try to be as brief as I can.
Yeah, if you can give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Harold Price. I'm located at 19951. Depending on what side, who you talk to, whether it's the post office or the city or whatever, the city says we're on South Highway 51. Post office says East 51. The sign on the street says Old Highway 51. So that's where we're at, anyway. And right next door to me at 19955 is La Favor Fiberglass Shop. Mr. La Favor and myself have been in a battle. I've owned that property for the last 13 years, never lived in it. I just kept it, trying to prepare for retirement. At 76, I thought it was time to try again. Anyway, Mr. La Favor and I have been going around and around and around about the fumes and all the other stuff that takes place that goes on over there. I have fiberglass material blowing across my yard. The odors are just intolerable. I mean, it's just absolutely, I don't know how anybody can eat a sandwich or have lunch tasting fiberglass and think it's going to be a healthy deal. It's not. So I went looking, and the only person I could get to help me was Mr. Swab. I have to take my hat off to him. He helped me, and he was the one that set up this meeting this last Wednesday. We sat down, and in that meeting, I didn't think it helped me, and I was a little bit irritated about it, but I, he handed me a letter, and the letter is dated in 1996. 1996. I thought the property over there was still A1, and apparently this letter says that the property in 1996 was changed to light industrial. Well, I guess what? I looked up light industrial, and under light industrial, it's kind of worked in my favor. District is intended to provide for the light manufacturing, processing, storage, wholesale, and distribution operations, with all operations contained within an enclosed building. The intent is to preserve the land for the light industrial and service-oriented commercial uses. Everything is supposed to be contained in the building, but yet he has a big smoke stack up there, puffing out these fumes constantly. He has his doors open that are, even if he doesn't have the stack going, the air blows in the south side and comes out on the west side and blows around it and goes right into my yard. He has a compressor house, I've got pictures of all this stuff, I'll be glad to leave this material with you, showing that the compressor is less than 30 feet from our bedroom, and is going all the time. And I've been fighting this. I started with Mr. Skates three years ago, and I was told nothing could be done about it, so I was forced to go down and get a lawyer, and I filed a suit against Mr. La Favor and his fiberglass company. The judge in Wagner County is just not making a ruling. It's been three months now, and he's just letting us sit there and rot on the vine. And every single day, we are still breathing.
One more minute.
We are still breathing the stuff that comes out of there, and that's the reason I'm here. I am looking for some interim help. If I could convince, and there is penalty clauses here in the back, if you look at the code again, if he's convicted of a misdemeanor, it calls for a $1,000 fine and up to 10 days in jail for every distribution. The thing that slays me about this whole thing, all this time I've been fighting this thing, 1996, my friend, was 21 years ago. So this man has been getting away with abusing the zoning ordinances of this city for 21 years. And I just started the battle three years ago, trying to get some changes, and I can't convince anybody to help. I mean, I can't, code enforcement doesn't want to close him down. Well, I can understand part of their position, but they've got to understand other things. We, the citizens of this country, there's a fiduciary duty here, a duty of trust. We trust the city to engage in the proper activity, so we engage in the proper activity, and we have a shared interest in having our community a great community. In my case, a Christian community. That's the reason why I moved here. Christian people, I thought they were trusted. I thought they were trustworthy. Handshake meant something. But over the last three years, I have found there's been a double standard. When I brought it to the attention of these people, no, no, we don't have a double standard. We talk about it in meetings all the time. Well, there is a double standard. If there is a business going on, they're going to vote for the business over the homeowner. Now, I didn't ask to be annexed into the city. Alls I'm asking is that if I'm annexed into the city and I'm required to keep the rules, shouldn't everybody be required to keep the rules? So I'm bringing this to the council's attention because I don't know what else to do. I'm at my wit's end.
And we can't take any action on anything that's on the citizens opportunity to just counsel?
I'm aware of that. I read the instructions on there, but I felt like that if at least came out as public knowledge, that this area has a big problem over there. Now, Max Aluman was there. Everything that he does is enclosed in a building. He's been doing the right thing ever since I've been, and I came in 1974, and he's been doing the correct thing. And for all the other time, the fiberglass companies have been doing the wrong thing. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. I appreciate it.
Next, we have General Counsel's business, 9A. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of nomination and appointment Mayor Craig Thurman to Broken Arrow Convention and Visitors Bureau for term expires September 2019. Norm.
Are you here to speak against him?
I guess.
No, sir, not at all. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. In accordance with Section 2-211 of the Broken Arrow Convention and Visitor Bureau ordinance, Mayor Craig Thurman recommends his nomination and appointment to the CVB board. If appointed to the CVB, Mayor Thurman's term would begin October 1st, 2017, and expire September 30th, 2019. The strategic plan on the tourism asset inventory set forth recommendations to restructure the CVB board to include members from lodging, dining, retail, sports attraction, and city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd just love to see someone who wants to be involved, don't you?
I've already missed a meeting, I guess, Norm.
I make a motion to approve the nomination and appointment of Mayor Craig Thurman to the Broken Arrow CVB.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion? Anybody want to protest? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
I'm staying. Item 9B, review and authorization of publishing requests for proposals to create an innovation district and authorize staff to proceed with the process retaining consulting firm. Farhad.
Good evening, Mayor and council. To assist us in the preparation of this innovation district plan, we are requesting the council to consider our proposal to go forward with an RFP for a consulting firm. The city of Broken Arrow in partnership with the chamber, the EDC, and our educational institutions is looking towards preparing a plan for the innovation district. This plan is to promote job retention, growth in our vital industrial areas, and education. The, towards the preparation of this plan, we have put out an LOI, a letter of interest, and we've received about 37 or 38 requests from companies that would be interested if the RFP were to be put out. So with this request tonight, we're requesting the council review the enclosed RFP and give us permission to proceed with that. The project will be funded through the STCI fund. This is in a step towards going forward, towards establishing the planned district. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
This may be a question for the city manager or Farhad, but a citizen emailed me with concerns about the fact that we were asking about this on our, in our recent survey, and whether or not it, how that impacted what we did tonight, and I would be interested to hear comments, and if that question makes sense. I'm not sure I'm asking it well, but it's, we've asked in our survey if there was, the citizens to give opinion about whether or not this innovation district should go, whether they support it, but I think it's been this council's position as far back as a year ago that we do support it. So could you maybe help me explain how that does?
Address some of that first. The innovation district is something that we came up with over three years ago in a chamber retreat before you were on the council, Scott, another councilor, and was in that position, and they, everyone supported it, the concept of a technology park, innovation district. So it's something we've worked at for over three years to get to this point, and it's something that, this is different than, I think the question on the survey, the way I read the survey is, should we fund the innovate, should, does citizens want us to fund infrastructure for a innovation district? Which so far, I've heard a lot of support for, and we'll see how the survey turns out. This item tonight is different. This is an item for our plan that we've talked about funding for a while, and there was even a line item in the budget to partially fund this plan, in the budget that we approved earlier this year. So this is something that has been discussed a lot. There is a lot of support for it, but it's something that the community, the school district, the chamber, and the city has worked on for several years. So it's a different, but the survey question is, is should we fund infrastructure, and should we put money towards trying to create this? The item that we have on here tonight is more of an item on getting a request for proposal to create a plan. So I think that's, I think it's two different items, but I'll turn to the city manager and let him answer if you have.
I think the mayor covered it. Okay.
Well, I will say that it actually goes back from my conversations with several members of the folks in the EDC, and the mayor, and several others, is that this concept was brought up about three years ago, and the council talked about it this past spring, and it was done under the auspices is that we need, we always need to be leaning forth in terms of making sure that you want to be, you know, our sweet spot is creating quality jobs and having, having housing that accommodates those people that live within our community. Having quality jobs drives the economy, and the whole purpose of having this innovation district, or at least exploring it, was trying to come up with something unique that would provide the high-tech type jobs through partnerships with an issue through the Broken Arrow Public Schools, Tulsa Tech, OCAST, and others, as well as a number of private entities have already expressed interest in partnering with us to see exactly how you would, how you would come up with a concept to develop the property near NSU, to see how we could turn, we could turn that area into a high-tech corridor to support, number one, the existing business, outstanding business we have here, in particular, the aerospace industry, flight safety L1, and many others, and actually hopefully create something that's unique enough that would attract business and industry to our and industry to our community. And so in terms of having a consultant, all Farhad's asking for the councils tonight is permission to go forward with the RFP, and let's review those proposals. And, you know, when the results come in from the citizens on the survey, we can evaluate those. And, you know, I think there has to be a lot more dialogue with the community about the park, because it's a concept that I don't think that everybody thinks about every single day. But when you talk about the potential for higher-paying jobs to work local, I think that the community so far has shown a supportiveness to explore this option, opportunity for our city.
Well, and thank you, both mayor and city manager. When a citizen asks a request, I try to get an answer as best I can, and I felt that the public forum was a good way to do so. But allow me to say that I support this. I support the concept of an innovation district. I think it was something that is special and cutting-edge for Broken Arrow. And I think the citizens have supported it, and it's been discussed for quite some time, both by this council and many other people in the community who understand the importance of being on the cutting edge of technologies that develops. And I think there's no reason why Broken Arrow shouldn't be the leader in that, since we lead in so many other things. We might as well lead in that as well. But I wanted to make sure, the concerns, if a citizen has a request, I want to make sure we can get that answered for them. So thank you.
Any more questions of Farhad?
I make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the RFP process for the creation of the innovation district plan.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9C, consideration and discussion of possible approval to grant waivers for property owners owned by Troy and Angel Kraus, located within Staple Chase Farms subdivision, and David Lewis and Rebecca Rodriguez within Glen Eagles subdivision. Bethan?
Yes, Mayor. You may recall that back in 2007, the City of Broken Arrow began the process of approving an assessment district to address the stormwater issues that were in Staple Chase Farms and Glen Eagles, and amended Glen Eagles area. The city manager and I had an opportunity to visit several months ago about individuals that had requested waivers. And so he felt that because the improvements were a benefit that runs with the land, that it was important to handle all the requests equitably. And so as a result, he notified the individuals that the assessments were in fact due, but the individuals were given a right of appeal to the city council. As councils aware, the council has granted waivers in the past to some of the individuals, and that was covered in the fact sheet. The two residences that are involved this evening on this particular item, the first one that I would like to address is the Kraus family. Basically, it was a little bit unique from the other requests that were granted, because their closing company did not make a specific request to the City of Broken Arrow, unlike the others. However, they did obviously perform a search of Wagner County records, and there was nothing in there to indicate that the assessment was due. So in other words, they acquired the property after the assessment had already taken effect, even though it hadn't been levied over the tenure period. The next family identified was David Lewis and Rebecca Rodriguez. Those individuals, again, also acquired the property after the original assessment process, and they did conduct a search with the City of Broken Arrow, and the closing company paid $25 to the city, and the city officials advised them that there were no lanes or other assessments there. So both of these sets of individuals are requesting waivers by the council, and it's certainly within your discretion to award those waivers should you see fit.
We have two citizens signed up. One is Troy Kraus, and he supports the waiver but does not want to speak. And then we have Rebecca Rodriguez, who also supports the waiver and would like to speak. So Rebecca.
Hi.
Give us your name and address.
I'm Rebecca Rodriguez. My address is 20203 East 37th Street South in the Glen Eagles addition. And we purchased our home in 2014 and was not aware of any of the stuff that was going on, the assessment. And so we are hoping that you will waive the fees for us.
Do we have any questions of Rebecca?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion for council?
I assume we need to take these separately.
If you like.
Okay.
You can do that.
I'd make a motion that we grant a waiver to Troy and Angela Kraus as on the fees imposed on the assessment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And we, motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
And I would make the same motion to grant the waiver to David Lewis and Rebecca Rodriguez.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Item 9D, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to grant a waiver for property owned by Yeshi and Selamona Rashido, located within Staple Chase Farms subdivision regarding assessment district initiated in 2007. Bethan?
Yes, sir. This is a little bit of a different situation. When the assessment letters went out earlier this year, he requested a hardship waiver. My understanding is that he has owned the property throughout the duration of the assessment. But I believe I was told that he's in school, and so was requesting a waiver. The way the process is supposed to work is technically, it should be spread over a period of 10 years, but we're pretty far into that process. So just for the council's consideration. But he is requesting a waiver for hardship reasons.
So, and has he paid any fees yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
And he's owned it since?
The inception.
Since the inception. So there's not a lack of notice?
That's correct. That's my understanding.
I think this is where it separates from what the original agreement was with all the homeowners and what we've just agreed to waive on tonight and the previous nights, where effective notice was not given to those previously given. And I would make a motion to deny the...
Request for a waiver on the assessment district.
Yeah, request. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree. I think this is different, and I would second the motion to deny.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9E, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute engagement letter with the law firm of Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood to function special counsel in connection with certain federal securities laws matters relating to the city's disclosure practices. Bethan?
Yes, sir. Since my tenure as city attorney with City of Broken Arrow, you've seen an awful lot of changes with regard to the involvement of the SEC and specifically municipal bonds. Of course, a lot of that has been, was related, of course, to the economy, but also unfortunately was probably related, at least in part, to some of the financial decisions that had been made by certain governing bodies. So the SEC, through the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, decided to take a much more active effort, enforcement effort, with regard to municipal securities. And in fact, over the last few years, you've seen some pretty significant enforcement actions, not only against cities, but also against the individual treasurers and financial individuals and leadership positions in various cities. You may recall that last year, when we, the council, went forward with the issuance of its general obligation bonds, MFS, who is the city's financial advisor, recommended hiring disclosure counsel. And because we were on such a tight timeframe, we utilized local bond attorney John Wideman, who did an excellent job, walked us through the questionnaire that's required by the Rulemaking Board. And we also, from a staff perspective, went through the official statement with a fine-tooth comb, and I believe that we ended up with a very good product. However, what I will tell you is that Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood is pretty much the firm in the United States of America with regard to securities law and also with regard to bonded indebtedness. And thanks to the efforts of Don Kaiser, the city's longtime bond attorney, who has a pre-existing relationship with Hawkins, Delafield, we were actually able to get in the door and get them to convince, get them to agree to undertake the City of Broken Arrow in representation. I attached the CBs of the three attorneys that will be working with the city staff and bond counsel on this. And if you had an opportunity to look at the CVB, Mr. McManally, I mean, he literally wrote the book on disclosures. And so while there probably is a little bit of sticker shock with regard to the fees charged, this is a nationwide firm with substantial expertise in disclosure matters. And from a staff perspective, the assistant city managers, the city manager, acting finance director and I, in cooperation with bond counsel and MFS, really believe that it would be very advantageous to the city council to engage this firm to do this. We did make a few minor revisions to the engagement letter after it was placed on the agenda. I visited with Mr. Roberts today. City of Broken Arrow doesn't presently use DRC, which is a reporting disclosure firm. We have utilized MFS in the past, but Mr. Cook and his folks are in the process of learning how to actively utilize Emma. But from a staff perspective, we believe that this is very, very important. The costs of the representation will be covered through the issuance. They'll be counted as issuance costs. So if the city manager may want to add something, I'll be happy to. Otherwise, we would request that you approve the engagement letter with Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood.
Just recommend approval, gentlemen.
I make a motion to approve engagement letter with Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood, LLP, and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9F, as we said earlier, that's been being tabled. Entertain a motion to table to November 21 council meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay. Item 9G, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of deferment of excess capacity sewer fee for T-Town Golf Ranch Platte. Larry?
Mayor, council. As set forth underneath Article 7 of the City Broken Arrow Code Ordinance, a developer or a builder shall pay an amount set forth in the manual of fees at a time of plating. Land that is within the one-year floodplain, land that is undevelopable, or land that is developed as a golf course is exempt from this fee. On July 1, 2002, the city council approved a request from T-Town Golf Ranch for a refund of an excess sewer capacity fee. The approval also deferred the payment of the fee until such time that the property has changed hands or developed for a different use. On October 17, 2017, the city council approved a request for a specific use permit, SP 285, for a place of assembly for the ridge at Broken Arrow, located on the side of the former T-Town Golf Ranch. The ridge, which will utilize the existing buildings on the site and will also use the site for outdoor recreation, there is an existing septic system on-site. Consistent with the previously approved specific use permits, SP 285 was conditionally approved for a period of two years with an expiration date of October 17, 2019. Furthermore, the conditions of the approval require the applicant to provide approval of specific use permit should the applicant desire to construct any new facilities on the site. On October 12, 2017, the planning commission approved a lot split for T-Town Golf Ranch Platte. Once recorded, the lot split will result in three parcels. While the deferment of the excess capacity sewer fee is recommended for the entire T-Town Golf Ranch Platte, owners of each tract of Platte will be responsible for their share of the fee at such time that the development occurs for each lot. Staff recommends that the city council defer the payments of the excess sewer capacity fee for T-Town Golf Ranch Platte until such time that new development occurs on the property. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So it's going to be in three different owners. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there won't be any problem? We'll know that when that time comes, when they develop that particular parcel, they will have to pay for it then. Is that correct?
One of the things that I think we'll be doing within our system is that whenever each lot is recorded of record and we get a copy back, is that we'll be addressing each lot. We'll flag it in the system, so that way, whenever a development comes forward, we'll know immediately that the fee must be paid associated with it.
Make a motion to defer payment of the excess capacity sewer fee for the T-Town Golf Ranch Platte until such time as the new development occurs on the property.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, we have item 9H, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution 1062, resolution requesting assistance from Oklahoma Department of Transportation in regard to constructing an industrial road to serve Alpha LaValle facility. Alex?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council. On August 1 of this year, the city entered an economic development agreement with Alpha LaValle to help facilitate the expansion of their facility. In support of that, the city has agreed to extend or to build an industrial road down the rightway that's currently established for Nashville Street, as well as to extend a 12-inch water line down that roadway. Because of the economic benefit this provides to both the area and the state, the state of Oklahoma has agreed to help support this with funding. The request you have tonight is for us to make that formal application to the state for the funds to help support the construction. The fact sheet goes into gory detail, which I won't go in for you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Alex?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1062 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9I, consideration, discussion, and possible approval, authorization to execute Resolution Number 1066, and I'll let Bethan explain it. Bethan?
Yes, sir. This was a condemnation action that was authorized by the City of Broken Arrow about, not quite a year ago, to allow staff to move forward in the city to acquire a very necessary drainage channel. Prior to condemnation, obviously, we, the city officials, Engineering Construction, obtained an appraisal, and we attempted to negotiate with landowners for the purchase. And when those efforts were unsuccessful, then it required the appointment of commissioners and moving forward with the condemnation action. The commissioners in this particular case actually came back with a fairly, what we consider to be a fairly substantial award. It was $110,000 for the particular area taken. One thing that is pretty important about the condemnation process in Oklahoma, also known as and referred to as eminent domain, is that if there is damage to the remaining property, and in this particular case, it's the position of the landowners that this drainage channel, because it is going to have to be an open channel and can't be piped, that it essentially bifurcates their property and increases their cost of development. Because, of course, in order to get across that open drainage channel, they're going to have to be able to drop box culverts or some other crossing in there. And so that is something that, obviously, the commissioners took into consideration as they were conducting their particular appraisal of this. We began the process of negotiations, and actually, Reap's attorney contacted us after the commissioners' award came in and requested that we communicate offers, which would provide for payment of $155,000 and conveyance of a pond. And there is a Scrivener's error in there. I want to thank my friends in Engineering Construction for calling me about that today. It's actually supposed to be .67 acres instead of 0.067 acres. It's, uh, actually supposed to be .67 acres instead of 0.067 acres. But, uh, nonetheless, it is, it's still a pond, and it's located just the site, to the south of the spillway, or they're referring to it as a, um, as a, um, a dam. But that particular area doesn't have any, any value to the city, and it will facilitate future development on their particular tract. And so, for those reasons, we're, we're recommending that the council present to this resolution, which we have obviously corrected the title, but it, uh, declares that particular parcel surplus and essentially returns it back to Reap. Um, you may recall that almost the entirety of this area was originally donated, uh, free of charge to the City of Broken Arrow, uh, I'm sorry, to the Broken Arrow Public Golf, uh, the wordy, a public trust that was eventually dissolved, uh, through the statutory process. And so from a legal perspective, we don't, we don't see any, any problems with allowing them to have this, this particular area. The other aspect of this is, I mean, they, they are, of course, going to be able to allow, um, build a crossing there, but one thing that, uh, the assistant city manager was very concerned about was ensuring that, that the construction would be in compliance with city standards, and it absolutely will. Um, there's also a stub street there, and they had requested that they be able to tie onto that particular area. Um, one final thing that I will mention, and because I did go through sort of an exhaustive review of, of, um, justifying a resolution of this case for that particular amount, because it will, of course, constituted judgment, will be spread on the tax rolls. Uh, this will bring, hopefully will bring development to, additional development of the City of Broken Arrow. And of course, that, that benefits not only the City of Broken Arrow in terms of, of sales tax revenues or ad warm or, or whatever type of development they choose to bring here, but, um, you know, the crossing and the payment of the funds and those sorts of things should assist in that regard. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Uh, otherwise, we would request that you approve resolution 1066 and authorize its execution.
Any questions, Bethan?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 1066 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Uh, item 10A, preview ordinance, consideration discussion, possible preview of an ordinance amended chapter 15, article one in general section 15 dash one, nuisance code. Bethan?
Yes, sir. Uh, this particular amendment provides for adoption of the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. As you know, periodically, development services will come in and request these revisions in order to bring us into compliance with the recognized standards. We would request that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption at a future, at the next meeting.
Any questions, Bethan?
Make a motion to preview the ordinance and set for adoption.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Okay, item 11A, ordinance, consideration discussion, possible adoption of ordinance number 3500. Bethan?
Yes, sir. Although you have to adopt these ordinances separately, the next two items pertain to the Quick Trip, um, that is, uh, that you considered last time that was previewed. Basically, uh, what Quick Trip has done with regard to this particular site, um, on County Line, is they have, uh, they wanted to basically raise the property, combine some parcels and, and start over in terms of plating. And in, in order to do that, uh, we had to go through this particular process to close the easements. So, uh, utility easements are being closed in both these ordinances, and we would request that you adopt the ordinances and approve the emergency clause.
Move to adopt ordinance 3500.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call?
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Move for emergency clause?
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Uh, item 11B, consideration discussion, possible adoption of ordinance number 3501.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3501.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Uh, item 11C, consideration, oh, emergency clause, sorry.
Make a motion, we have an emergency clause?
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Uh, now we'll go to 11C, consideration discussion, possible adoption of ordinance number 3502. Bethan?
Yes, sir. This particular ordinance pertains to closure of a 14 and a half foot portion of a 17 and a half foot utility easement so that they can construct a pool. Um, all the utilities and staff are in support of that. We would request that you adopt the ordinance and approve the emergency clause.
Move to adopt ordinance 3502.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Move, move for the emergency clause?
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 12, remarks inquiries by government body members. I don't have anything, anybody have anything?
I don't, no. I had a, uh, uh, an item. Uh, last week, uh, the police chief, Barry Hill and I, uh, went to the, uh, Board of Education and the Janet Dunlap's, uh, uh, Fall Board Showcase and really enjoyed it. Uh, I know that, uh, as I shared with them, uh, with the superintendent and some of the, the board members, uh, that, uh, scheduling was a problem, uh, for everybody, and, and we do work closely with the education. Uh, they acknowledge that. I know the city manager meets with them, uh, all the time, but we really did enjoy it. She did say, the superintendent did say that she'd be happy to schedule another one anytime that, that we wanted to go. Uh, we made a trip to Sequoia, uh, to, uh, the Broken Arrow High School, was able to see, um, some of the, our youth, uh, city council previously had talked about a multi-handicapped playground equipment, so we saw quite a few, uh, places where they had that. Uh, we also was able to, uh, at the high school, uh, of course, it's just a monster. Uh, it is, when you just go in there and just walk around from end to end. But, uh, four of the leadership kids that met us, two of them were our youth, uh, city counselors, which I thought was, uh, very good. And then we were talking about one of the, the newest elementary school, uh, about, I asked the question about Hillside Drive, and, uh, of course, they were bragging on you, Kenny, about how you helped them, uh, develop at the elementary school and where the, uh, uh, future of middle school is going to be and where Hillside Drive was going to be. So it just made me feel good to know that all these people have been working together, and it was, it was a great day to spend with them. And, uh, again, uh, city manager, uh, I know you visit with her every month, but if you would like to schedule that at a time when we are all in town, I think that would be really great, get to visit with their board and their, uh, leadership team.
Did you get to talk about one Broken Arrow had one elementary school? Just saying.
I did, I went to the one elementary.
I just wanted to bring that up.
I didn't bring it up then, though.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to item 13, marks and updates by city manager. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. In the essence of time, I just have a couple of things I would, I would like to mention. Um, the situation with the citizen that came earlier, Mr. Price, I'll speak to Mr. Swab as soon as possible and find out, uh, exactly where we're at on that, then I'll also visit with Mr. Skates and then get back to the council on, on exactly what we find. Uh, at the last city council meeting, there were a number of residents that came before the council. Um, three of those were some folks that had some concerns. Two of them related to existing businesses in the downtown area, and the other one was a policing matter. I've tried to keep the council updated on, on those items. I can tell you is that we have reached out to the business owners of those two businesses and expressed, uh, the concerns that we have of the city regarding approvals and, and being in compliance. Uh, we have gotten complete cooperation from the businesses, and we are working with them. Uh, there are some approvals that one of those businesses needs to secure, and if in fact they don't secure those, those businesses, then we're going to have to take the appropriate actions to bring them into compliance. Uh, with regard to the policing matter, uh, the chief, uh, reached out and spoke to the resident that came and let them know that we are aware of the situation, that we're going to be monitoring it. If there is an issue, we will handle it. Some, I was very happy the way we handled it. Uh, the other thing was with regard to the crosswalk, uh, that was for the residents that came out, and I can tell the council that I believe, uh, we have a temporary solution that we're going to be, uh, presenting to, uh, the school district, uh, temporary being approximately 18 months, because we have to put the plans and specifications, get those finalized, get it out to bid and complete the work, uh, that will more likely include, uh, actually appropriating some additional funds to provide a crossing guard. Uh, but there are going to be some temporary improvements, so hopefully it's minimal as possible, but yet that are safe, and so, but there, so there won't be any issues when it comes time to actually widen the road. So we, we're, uh, very responsive, and once I'm know for sure, then we'll reach out to the residents that, that, uh, that came and, and make sure they're aware that we are, uh, trying to address that concern. So, and then, the, uh, last thing I want to mention is that we were in Washington DC last week, and there were eight or nine of the, uh, city officials that, uh, that, that went, and we had the, uh, great pleasure to actually, the mayor and I met with, uh, five of our six representatives. And then on Tuesday, we had, uh, all of our representatives, senators and congressmen for 30 minutes each, and there were three of the elected officials that actually came down and, and met with us and updated us on everything from homeland security to North Korea, to the proposed tax, um, the tax amendments that are being considered. Uh, it was, any question we had, they were answered, and I think it was great for us to fly in. Uh, we also asked for support for our Tiger grant that the engineering and construction department has submitted on behalf of the city for, uh, County Line Road from 61st to 71st. We did submit it last year, and we did not get approval. We met with INCOG, and INCOG helped us with some jet suggestions, and so I believe we're going to get letters of support from Senator Inhofe and also Senator Mullen, even though he is really not in ours, he's very supportive of what's going on in Broken Arrow, has a business here, so he's very committed to helping, and we're also going to ask Senator Langford for a letter. Uh, we're talking several million dollars that could really make a difference in, in terms of that project, so we're continuing to go forward. Uh, we brought up a few other issues, but I think it's important, uh, that we have a presence there. You know, it is something, it's, it is, it is a commitment of time, uh, but I think that we need to be before our federal legislators at least once a year, if not more, uh, to make sure if we have needs, uh, that they're, uh, that they're aware of those, and, uh, they're, they're very receptive. Anytime we come, uh, they carve out the time. And so I just want to thank everybody for, for their going. It's a time commitment for, for everyone, but I do believe it was very, very beneficial. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
I do think you're right. I think we are going to get letters, uh, from both senators and Congressman Mullen, so that's, that's really great. Uh, well, we do have an executive session, so I'd entertain a motion for a brief recess to go into BAMA and Beta.
Moved. Second.
Motion second, roll call, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Uh, I'll call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy. Parks.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Udi.
Here.
Thurman.
Here. Uh, we, uh, item three is consent agenda, are there any items here moved?
Move for approval of consent agenda?
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Uh, item five, public hearings, appeals, presentation of recognitions, there are none. Uh, item six A, cons, uh, general authority business, uh, presentation discussion and possible action regarding costs related to Citizens Recycling Committee pilot project recommendation. Lee Zerk?
Good evening, Chairman, Authority members, Lee Zerk, General Services Director. Back in August, the Citizens Recycle Committee had presented their activity report to you, which also included their recommendation to, uh, run two separate pilot projects, one with a single cart system for recycling and one is a dual cart system, one for trash and one for recyclables. The authority had asked, uh, the staff to get some more detailed pricing on that. In turn, we, um, uh, worked with GBB to prepare a detailed cost analysis of what these, uh, pilot projects would cost. So here tonight is Kate with GBB, and she's going to go over, uh, that in detail with you and, and, uh, answer any questions you may have on that subject. There should be a PowerPoint presentation, there it is. All right, Kate, thank you.
Hello. Good to see you all again. Um, are we just in the PDF? Okay, all right. Um, so I'm going to follow along here so I can, uh, instead of, so I don't have to click. Okay, so thank you again for having us back to work on this project some more. And, um, I, uh, my next slide is a little picture of me, uh, to remind you guys, we've been working here with you guys since last April, uh, on advancing this project, and about this time last year, we'll see on the next slide that the Citizens Committee was formed and began to start planning out their meetings, and this is just a reminder of the activities that they did in the course of their work. Um, going on to the next slide, we'll see, they had, this is the first three of four recommendations from the committee. Um, they had, can, recommended discontinuing the, the bag distribution, um, which, uh, costs the city quite a bit of money each, each year. Um, they recommended going to providing garbage and recycling on the same day once weekly, and, um, to use a, to start collecting recyclables at the curb using a rolling cart. Their fourth recommendation, which we can see on the next slide, is to conduct a pilot project, as Mr. Zerk mentioned. Um, the committee recommended doing a pilot of, a, a dual pilot of two different systems, one with two carts, one for garbage and reci, one for garbage, one for recycling, and the second one was to do a pilot of a cart only for recycling and to continue to set out garbage and bags on the ground. To show, just remind you, as we go on to slide six, this is the same slide you saw when I was here in August that showed our estimate at that time of how those, those pilots might cost. That information was based on GBB's experience with, um, other vendors and what they might cost, uh, for GBB surfaces, what it might cost on capital, things, et cetera. Those, um, shapes there that say different from the report, that was because from the time the committee finalized its report until the time this group met, we had fat, gotten revised price information on the truck retrofit, but I wanted to preserve that because I was showing it from the previous presentation. If we go on to slide seven, this discusses what Mr. Zerk just covered, how GBB was asked to prepare more detailed information of three different versions of doing a pilot project. On slide eight, I can review here what that involved, what, how that work was different from what we did previously. We did go in and do a much more detailed estimate of the level of effort for GBB and also several other, uh, service providers, including doing, um, survey research, survey work with Shabbard Research. Um, for the larger type pilots with a thousand homes, you can do a statistically valid, um, you can complete 400 surveys that could then be expected to project how the city as a whole across would be able, would respond. On the smaller pilot of 500 homes, they would instead do 200 longer format opinion surveys, which would provide more detailed opinion information, but not statistically be able to be projected. For example, a PR firm is going to have to prepare two different messages if it's a dual pilot, so the according use of hours is higher. And same thing with how many surveys have to be completed by the research firm. A little less sensitive to how large the pilot's project is, is the routing work to do, set up the routes from C2 Logix. The firm we used for the resource estimator on the cost modeling we previously did, they already have all the data, they already know the situation. Numerically, it's irrelevant to them how many houses there are, because they don't have to input the data, which is a large part of their service cost. The estimates from the PR firms were slightly more when it was a dual pilot because of needing to do two messages. And then the pricing that we got from American Waste Control for the recyclables processing, of course, is entirely dependent on how many tons there are, but basically it's such a small number of tons, it doesn't really impact the cost of the effort overall. Going on to slide nine, I just wanted to show you quickly the assumptions we had. And the ones you see there in the sort of blue color, these are, you've seen before, these are the numerical value assumptions we use for calculating the costs. One that's really different from when we've talked about this previously is what American Waste Control came back with on the processing and I, even though it is a very small proportion of the project cost, I wanted to point it out to you. If we go on to slide 10, we had initially thought it would be a cost center to process the recyclables, but with the revenue sharing that's involved, the, it actually saves $9 per ton on this pilot project, because the net cost for the processing is 342 minus the savings and avoided disposal of $12. So actually every other, every more ton that got recycled in this project will a little bit affect the price, so. Again, also the truck retrofits are $10,000 per truck, making that the number of trucks is completely dependent on how many homes are in the pilot, so that is a big one. And then just so you know, cart count was based on a 2.5% oversupply. The exact number might sometimes differ because you usually get a price break buying at the truck load level. Going on to slide 11, just as information on, since we're about to talk about dollar amounts, I wanted to be sure to share on behalf of GBB and the other firms that contributed information that this was given in all earnesty and sincerity, that they aren't actual proposals. And then to present the information more clearly, we rounded values off to the nearest $5,000. Exact values are available upon request. So let's go to slide 12, please, and take a look. The first is the dual pilot of two different methods of collecting, 1,000 homes in each pilot. And we had estimated back in August, as a reminder, would be about $445,000, $400,000, so that one was very close. Like I said, some of the difference, one of the big things is that PR is slightly higher needing, because they need to do two different messages. Move on to the next slide, slide 13. We have pricing for a single pilot, 1,000 homes, so that's one collection method, 1,000 homes in the pilot area, estimated at about $315,000, $315,000. Some of the savings there come from less PR work and of course, less capital. And then going to slide 14, the last item we were asked to price out at the time of the assignment was to do the same thing, a single pilot of one method of collection, i.e. two carts, but only 500 homes. There are significant capital savings by reducing the size of the pilot area. The primary compromise is it's not a real route, because you wouldn't have such a small route. And so in learning how the city's efforts might actually be, what it might really cost, for example, to run the trucks and do the routes, that would have to be projected as double, because it wouldn't, you would not have such a small route in real life, in a real implementation scenario. So however, for the participants, the experience should be the same and the information they give should be the same. Excuse me. On slide 15, I just wanted to highlight some internal costs that were not included in these estimates at direction. We did not attempt to estimate what they might be. They might just roll into the budget as is. There might be no impact, but these things like overtime, fuel, things that are already expended by the city to collect waste, we didn't estimate what the impact on them, plus or minus, might be for doing the pilot. Excuse me. In addition, GBB wants to note that in our experience, once a service is in place, even once the pilot period concludes, generally municipalities continue to provide the service to the pilot participants until citywide or countywide implementation takes place. So you would continue to have some operational costs to provide this different service to these different customers, because they, while they wait for everybody to get implemented. On slide 16, we've noted that, as said previously, the single pilot of scenario one is a best practice choice. It's, that's a nationwide standard level of service and piloting what you think you might want to implement is also a best practice, to not have to go back and change something later on. We understand, however, we all live in the real world and it's expensive to do a pilot project. And so that's why our secondary recommendation is the same, but for a smaller participant group. As I mentioned, just if, you know, just recently, the number of participants can affect a lot of the cost, namely capital. I wanted to note that GBB and the other participants that contributed to the memo, the other service firms that gave us information, were hesitant about piloting something that's, that it's a versus situation. One is going to be the quote unquote winner and one's going to be the quote unquote loser. There'll be a lot of costs and challenges associated with whoever was in the losing pilot to either get changed to the winning or have the service removed until the citywide implementation is done. There's a lot of complications associated with that and all the contributors to the memo expressed a lot of hesitancy about piloting when you know you're not going to choose one of the things. So going on to our last slide, we have, what would be next on this project would be to choose what pilot you want to do. And like I said, we received information from, received four responsive price information packets from PR firms in the area and we would recommend that you select one of them. I would suggest any of the four should be given the opportunity again to propose and select one as a partner and then go forward with finalizing the scope and then kick off the pilot. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Kate?
You know, I got this, I've read through it several times, visited with the city manager, telling him I was on my fourth reading and I read it several times since then. It seems like we lost something along the way. Kate has done a great job and her company has, I think there's, she's never left the committee out. You know, she felt like it needed to be a two cart system. Nationally, it needed to be a two cart system and that's in the minutes of some of our meetings that she said that. But the committee did vote and I know that Russell's here, if any of them want to make a comment. The committee was a representative of the citizens, so to speak. And I think when we talk about trash bags, and I asked the question of Kate in one of our meetings, about what percentage of cities across the nation have trash bags and have people picking them up and putting in trash bags, I mean in the dumpsters? And I think it was around 5%. It's not used a lot across the country. Is that correct?
It's, it's less and less often and getting replaced frequently or customers use other carts that they provide. And we were unable to find, we are not aware of programs where there's garbage in bags with a cart for recycling that are having super successful programs.
So, and I'm in agreement, I've never hidden the fact that I'm for, certainly for recycling and for a cart, and that was the recommendation. So that's not the question of the cart for the recycling, for those that choose to recycle. The question is how we're going to pick up the garbage. I just feel like that, certainly want to hear what the comments were of the council, but I think to, and I've had several calls from some of the committee members today, that they weren't happy to be notified because they approached it as that there was not a problem with the, with the two different scenarios and then come back and let them look at the data and see how people react to that. I hate to go into changing this out and not have the full support of our own recycling committee. I think that anything that we do, any changes, I know, I don't think there's a decision tonight, but anything that we do, I think it needs to at least go back through the committee to get their input of how they vote, say 75% or whatever. But they were convinced that we could do that until I got this recommendation that it was too expensive to do that. You know, so whatever you think, I don't know if any of the committee members want to make any comments on it. We have, I know it's a decision that if you decide you want to go with two carts, you just need to decide to do it. I've heard that all year within this committee. But it's not that easy when a community as close knit as Broken Air, we're 110,000, but we're still close knit and they're dependent upon the city council to make a right decision. And I just think we need to look at all the alternatives. You know, if it takes going back to 500, so be it. You know, that at least gives us some numbers. If it takes doing one in this budget year and one in next budget year, you could still have them close to one another. I just feel like there's some type of scenario that we can make it work. If not, I think it needs to go back to the committee, at least have their final analysis of it.
So there was never a decision of having one segment of the city do two carts and another do a cart and bag?
There was. There was. Small, that's what, that's what the two, that's what the recommendation was from the committee.
Oh, okay, that was.
Uh huh. And that's why they were caught off guard when it's that, now that's not going to be that way.
And you discounted because of the cost. Is that correct? Or just because that's just not typically done?
It's not typically done.
But they should have been told, and you've done a great job, I'm not being, I think they should have been told by somebody when is making that decision, well, we're going to recommend that you not do that, because that's not typically what's done, because we're used to looking at and we got a survey going now, surveying the citizens and getting input from them to see what they want and go from there.
If I, if I may, based on, because we did circulate the draft and some of the feedback was shared, and we went ahead and did an estimate for you on, I mean, recall, I mentioned in my presentation, fewer homes has effect on some of the cost items in the pilot. And if you, if you still did a dual with both being only, both being 500, we have the cost projected at a little over 320,000, 320,553, and 18 cents.
Is that exact 18 cents?
I could expand the number of decimal points if you like, sir. Just so that you have that cost information for decision-making purposes. That compares to the full scale of a single pilot was 315, just as a reminder.
So if we, I just want to make sure I understand. If we did the dual scenario pilots, scenario one and scenario two, but reduce both of them from 1,000 homes or 1,000 customers to 500 customers?
Each.
That would be where the 320 number comes in.
And that would be two carts in one and just like the committee had.
Yes.
A cart and bag on the other.
Because the purpose for the pilot is sort of twofold. It's one was A, to figure out which one worked better. And I know, I know you express an opinion and I don't discount that opinion, I think it's important, but I do think that there was a, we can't discount the opinion of the committee either, as we work through this. So I think that one was determine which one of those two worked best, that was concept A. And concept B, of course, was determine whether either one of them worked better than what we have, I think. So we're trying to, that's what we guys work through here.
Well, plus I think there's a history of the trash bags, right, wrong or indifferent, that we've provided our citizens and just to discard that and say we're going to go with the two cart trial, I think doesn't do our citizens justice. I think we've taken them for granted and not giving them that second option.
And as I said, the carts are still, the committee's recommendation that the carts should be used in the recycling, it wouldn't be a question. So I still think it's feasible that both, we have two carts, that's what it should be, but the committee wanted the two, because some of them were upset, because they haven't really made up their mind of exactly, of going with the two carts. And I like to make sure the committee is sold on it before we present it to the citizens.
Well, and I agree with Johnny, I think that the concept is trying to figure out a way to do it. I know this is a challenge for the city manager, is maybe we can roll it over into two budget years so we can do both pilots. You know, I see the pros and cons and I support recycling, I pay monthly for curbside recycling, but I see the pros and cons. You know, we have the bag system and let that, you know, people try and see how that works, because, you know, trying both of them, I think we need to try the bags and cart.
One of the recommendations was that we do away, we don't furnish the bags.
Right.
Which I'm pleased with.
I agree.
That's a half a million dollars a year.
Right.
That right now is being burned up because of we're going and they, Katie, they've done an excellent job.
Right.
It's just that I think we need to either follow through with what the committee wanted or go back to the committee and see if they have any other suggestions. But I think we need to have that pilot unless they want to change it. And I, the ones that's called me would really still like to see both pilots. But if we want to take it back to the committee, Russell and our city manager and see what they think about it, I'd just like to see them involved. They spent nearly a year on this, working on this.
Well, let's talk about the finances for just a minute, okay? We budgeted $125,000 for the pilot. So if you look at the skinny version of the two pilots at 325,000, excuse me, $320,000, that's $195,000 short. You heard the acting finance director talked about reserve policy and where we, with projections plan on being, the direction of council to move towards having the 90 days and so forth. We could come up with the additional money. What we would have to do, would be my recommendation, if this is the direction of the council, is we would go back and look at our pay-as-you-go capital improvement program and we would look to see if there are any projects that we could defer up until next fiscal year to come up with $195,000. Now with a $50 million approximately budget and so forth, we can find $195,000, as long as council or the utility authority understand, is that something's going to have to delay because I think we need to rebuild our reserve. I mean, you got the report that my only concern about our finances through the first quarter has to be the utilities and the fact that we're so heavily dependent upon the weather and we've had, we had a pretty cool summer, so we're below projections for revenue. So I've spoken to Russell about it briefly and if that's a direction of council, we will come up with the funds to fund the, we could fund the two skinny, two skinny pilots if that's a direction of the authority.
I, I think you say, if we're willing to give something else up, I say it's depending on what we're giving up.
I'll come back to council and let them know.
Yeah. I don't want to.
And we really won't be taking a vote on this tonight, because we don't have all the authority members here and we need everyone to participate and have everyone's input.
But I do think Johnny's correct. I do think it needs to, I mean, I think the committee needs their insight, too, but...
I think, I think in the meantime, that I would have the committee meet, my suggestion would be have the committee meet, have the same presentation with the facts and numbers and maybe you don't have to drive all the way up here, you know, but just kind of go over it with the committee and to make sure they're still their direction and it's going to be, it's going to be costly if that recommendation is to the council. I don't think the committee would really care anything about going from 1,000 to 500. I'm not speaking for the committee, but that really wouldn't make a difference. It's just they need a little bit of facts and numbers. So I'd like to see, my choice would be to go ahead and present that to them as the city manager ponders where he might come up with that money. I still think, I don't know if I remember correctly, you didn't like it, you like for them, if there's two of them to be done at the same time, because you got the same time of the year.
Yes, sir.
But money-wise, maybe it would be that we could run one close to the, you know what I mean, through the summer and one, you know what I mean, starting the late summer, the early fall, and we still have numbers on it and it would get as close as that we could.
Council, let me take a look, because if, if it's my preference, if we can try to run them concurrently, because honestly, I don't want to be dragging this out until next year, this time next year, if it's possible, because of the fact that we have to promote this, we have to acquire the materials, modifications to the vehicles, the public education, it'd be great if we could get this rolling in the timeframe that Mr. Zerk and Russell Gale have worked out to, where we can be, we can be studying this and then we get the results and we can come back to you next summer with the, with the results, if that's the decision of the council to do two. Sure. Well, I, I agree with Johnny in the sense that I think, I think it's worth getting feedback from the committee about the concept of the, you know, doing one or two. I think it'd be worth having that discussion with them as we're looking at what our financial options are. I also agree with you, though, that if we decide to do the dual, the two, which is what the committee has recommended at this point, that they should be done simultaneously so we get the best picture, I think. I agree with that. So I think right now it's a matter of figuring out if we have the money and getting feedback from those who've, who've done the work to give us, in conjunction with GBB, to give us an opinion.
But I think that, as I said, I think it'd be good for the committee to meet as soon as possible and we get feedback from them if this is still what they feel like is best for the community and go from there. for the community, and go from there.
If I might add, now that the spreadsheets are built, changing a few values on the input side is, it's not, we can explore different things when the committee meets and discusses, and to look at what the actual cost impacts might be.
Russell, did you have any comment that you wanted to make?
I would agree that maybe our committee should meet perhaps next week, look at this, and then hope we'll be able to resolve some of these things, give a further recommendation to the council for maybe two weeks from now. I didn't know if you were going to table it, obviously, till then, or maybe later, but whichever situation. My personal view, I got the report yesterday afternoon, and, oh, I gotta go.
We want to record your lovely voice.
My personal view is, I think, you know, we need to discuss this, but I agree with Johnny, we had this dual thing, I think more or less to have the existing bags be in a scenario that is looked at in the pilot, of how much they love the bags or not, the citizens, as far as what we're doing on that, but still introducing recycling into the equation. And so, have that sort of as a control thing, as well as the, you know, the two carts scenario for recycling and garbage. So, I think, I certainly personally do not have a problem of making it a skinnier pilot. I don't think we ever were locked in on 1,000 homes, or 1,000 this or that, and we certainly want to save money for the city. But you do need to have enough to have a statistical give and take on it.
Was the issue of we love the bags because the city provides them, or we just love the bags?
Well, I think it's just looking at the history of when you try to change this, you look to the history of what Tulsa went through, and they had a lot of blowback on, you know, having carts, period, and then now they're, you know, happy with it, and most of the citizens are happy with it I've talked to. So, the thing is, though, we'd want to have the, at least my personal view is, have that dual look at it. But with the committee, I think, should meet, I'm sure we could call a meeting for next week, and then come report.
Yeah, I just wanted, I want to let.
Can I also add something?
Yeah.
I'm a member of the recycling committee.
Yeah, come up here.
I'm Becky Wood, and a member of the recycling committee, and I also want to add that a couple of our committee members were also looking into the availability of grants that would pay for the carts, even for a pilot program, which would significantly take costs down if we didn't have to pay for them ourselves, and we're willing to provide that research to help the city save some money. So, I just wanted to add that in.
Thank you.
PepsiCo has offered to help fund with recycling, and that's something we was going to discuss with council, because obviously, do you want to allow a vendor to purchase carts? I mean, that's a policy decision. Those carts could be worth $30,000 or $40,000 if they're going to provide one cart. It's a little bit different than putting Pepsi-type recycling containers at our parks. And so, I certainly appreciate and think it's a great idea to consider, but that's something the council really needs to decide if, you know, if in fact they want to partner with someone for recycling, that from my perspective, you know? And the other thing I want to mention is that I don't want them to get lost here, is this is extremely difficult decision, probably the most important public policy decisions this city will probably may, has to make. We cannot continue to operate picking up trash the way that we do it. I know, I know residents don't want to hear that, but the operational challenges that exist are severe. And I love the bag system as much as everyone else does, but to be a pragmatist, to say that we, five or 10 years from now, will be able to pick up trash in bags is extremely challenging. The operational cost for personnel cost, the workers' comp, and everything that goes along with trying to find folks to do this service, it's extremely difficult. And I just have to say that, is the residents respectfully always don't want to hear that. They just want their trash picked up in their bags. And so, I can just say that, you know, to me, I think that there needs to be some type of pilot with the bags and the carts, because that's what the resident talked about in the survey a year and a half ago. And if we do that, and it doesn't work, and then the council has the ability to say that we implemented it the way that you ask, and if it doesn't work, then you have the data to basically substantiate that you honored their request, and it just wasn't something works. So, when you, if you have to make that transition, then you will have the data to be able to substantiate that. If they come back and they actually support the bag system with the carts, and they go against the national trends that have been presented here, then we can say that we're unique. Because I think the number one thing is to try to become more sustainable, and how we do that, you have a couple of options out here, and I think that we need to consider both of them.
Well, I think, I understand exactly what you're saying. I think this started with a survey that told us that our citizens supported recycling, and with the understanding that we wanted to look at ways to incorporate recycling into our trash, or our solid waste collection system. Doing, exploring both these options is two ways to do that. And I think we've got, we've got to bear that in mind, that no matter what we do, we're changing a system, and it's got to be done in a way that dovetails with what our citizens are willing to do, because if we change a system and then no one recycles, we're not, we haven't, we haven't accomplished anything. So, it's got to be done in a way that our citizens will support it. And I think the only way to determine that is to, is to analyze as much data as possible, and give enough, as many people as possible, as is affordable, the opportunity to experience the process. So, I mean, I think that's where the concept of the two pilots come from, is we, we know what is recommended best practices, but we also have a unique community here, and we want to give an opportunity to see how this works. So, I know it's probably frustrating.
And again, I've publicly commented, I've always been in favor of the carts. You know, I've used a cart for 20 years, and my hill that I live on is really a tough hill, and I've never had any trouble moving a cart up and down. So, it's not, certainly not that I'm opposed to it, I think that spending a half a million dollars wasted each year, and I've spoke publicly in favor of it. So, I'll be ready to vote now for it, but that's not the point. The point is, we want to look at as much data as we can, and that's what our citizens committee wanted, so we need to provide that.
If it's the direction of the authority, then we'll move to set up a meeting of the committee as soon as practicable, and then let them discuss this further, and then come back with the council with their thoughts, and be in a position, if you're ready, to consider giving staff direction at more likely a meeting in December.
Okay.
If not January, depending on how things go.
I think that that's consistent with what we've discussed.
You probably need a motion to memorialize that.
Okay. Can the motion be to incorporate what the city manager's recommendation or suggestions were?
What kind of motion do you want now?
Yeah.
Just a motion to send it back to the recycling committee.
I make a motion, we send it back to the recycling committee, then.
Second.
Motion, and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes, thank you, Kate.
Thank you very much for having us again, and whatever the decision, we look forward to enthusiastically working with you on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Okay, there is no executive session, and one more motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. I'll call the Brooklyn Economic Development Authority meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy. Parks.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Udi.
Here.
Thurman.
Here. Item three, consideration consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from consent agenda?
Move for approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. There's no general authority business, we have an executive session, so I entertain a motion to go into executive session to, well, I guess first we need a motion for a brief recess to declare the room.
Recession, please, yes. Make a motion to have a recess.
Second.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. We're in recess.